No, well, welcome, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yes, actually, no, I wasn't gonna say it.
Me and you.
Welcome, welcome, everybody to the four work session of the city council. All council members are present with the exception of council member Blair, who I believe will be going in shortly. We'll begin with a review of the special city council meeting agenda. So tonight we have. And we have our opening ceremony and then. Mayor Nadolski will present the his hundred day review of his his blueprint for stronger Ogden. And we have some minutes by council member Blair. So again, hopefully he's here to he's had a chance to review those. Then we have a public hearing for two items or one item, sorry. The proposed partial street vacation of the Kahoon Street between F Avenue and G Avenue. This was extended from February 20th, 2024. And then we'll be into a report from planning commission. The proposed zone text amendment prohibiting painting and covering of exterior brick and commercial or multifamily zones in the East Central District. And then we'll have a report from administration on the appointment of community and economic development director. We'll take public input on that item and invite Jared to to talk to us on that. Oh, usually after the vote. Okay. That's fine. And then we'll have. The proposed amendments to the natural resources and sustainability stewardship committee ordinance. That and then finally, we'll have public comment. So any discussion items or questions or anything on that? So we we look at the looking at this, the schedule of the agenda, we were wondering if we maybe want to take a motion to amend the. Agenda to move the amendments to the natural resources and sustainable stewardship committee earlier in the meeting to allow. Allow that to take place earlier in the meeting. Any thoughts on that?
Just just before the CED director appointment consideration.
Okay. And public comments and then. Adjournment. Okay. First up today on our work session, we'll invite Justin and Taylor to come up to talk about the proposed 36 inch canyon water line. We're to talk first about what the project entails and then we'll invite Fred Philpot, and I don't know if Laura Lewis is online or if it's just Fred. We'll see to oh, there's Fred. There he is. Okay. Not Fred. Sorry about that. Just Fred. To talk about the financing discussion, Fred just walked in and I said, just Fred. Yeah, sorry. Okay, maybe I said that. Anyway, so we'll start with Justin and Taylor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ritchie and members of the council. We appreciate this opportunity to be able to come and talk to you about this project and. How it actually affects every single one of us in this room and really everybody in Ogden. So. First off, I'd say just take a quick minute, close your eyes and reopen them and we're gonna go down a kind of a trip down memory lane for over 100 years ago. Of how we've gotten to where we are. So. That it's it's all about water. So when the pioneers showed up a long time ago, we found water and there's a great water source all the way up the top of Ogden Canyon and. The city did a great job securing all those water rights up the canyon. And this is a picture of the artesian wells that were up Ogden Canyon. In fact, I in in looking at some of these old pictures, I I wished I could have seen this in person person of just how awesome it was to see that much just. On just filtered water coming through the ground, just gushing up out of the ground that was really just unbelievable, the amount and. Probably that that's how they did just to see if they got sick, but as time went on. But but yeah, they could. They could just kind of halfway bend over and be able to take a sip out of that pretty amazing. The amount of water that was showing up. Yeah, that could have been. That could have been a little test mug right there, too. Yeah. Ogden City has these water rights and a little thing called Pineview Reservoir that that got built affected where these artesian wells are and we'll we'll have some more pictures coming up of of that, but. The line we are here to talk about tonight was actually constructed in 1935 commissioned and the. This installation was the second line that was installed. There was a line that was installed first. It was a 24 inch. Line and we'll we'll talk about that real briefly, but that we a few years ago, we actually reconstructed that line and that line generally runs. Right down the alignment of what the road is now of SR 39 up Ogden Canyon. But but this line to be able to meet the needs and and I have really appreciate the vision of our city leaders many years ago. To understand that the need that we would have for water and they did a great job. Being able to secure the rights of this water and also secure the conveyance of this water. So here's a here's a picture of the 24 inch line that we replaced. And so I show this just to help us understand the condition. And this line was approximately 100 years old when we replaced it, but the line was riddled with with damage like this, just holes and that's. You know, a 100 year old steel pipe. This is what it looks like and I can imagine. How long this this pipe had looked like that. In fact, as they had removed sections of this pipe out of the ground, kind of piled it up, I walked up to it and. Some of this I actually went up and grabbed it and could could just peel off some of the steel that it was it was had gotten that thin. So it's it's really important to to understand just how it's where and and after so long, the condition that they they come.
Probably just for that was probably the size of my fist.
That's yeah. That was a 24 inch pipe. So to see that we're talking like a little mini basketball could almost fit into some of these holes. So the the state that we're dealing with right now is that have this this pipeline that was installed and it's approximately 90 years old. And in dealing with aging infrastructure and really the risk that we have of the failure of this line, what what does that failure mean to all of us and. This, these two lines coming down the canyon account for basically 70% of our water that supplies Ogden City. And it during the summertime, it meets all of our our peak day demand. This also happens to be the cheapest water that the city has in both being able to grab the well water and the production of our. Water treatment plant and and be able to produce for our city. So that that comes into to play. Again, this is a picture that we found of original when they first kind of built the the Pineview Reservoir and how it affected our artesian wells up there. This is from a document that was it from a geological survey. It's called the Ogden Valley Artesian Reservoir. It's from April of 1942 and it talks about our our water supply and from this artesian well. And that it's now submerged by Pineview Reservoir and that the wells from this natural artesian reservoir, which fluctuate. Talks about much like the the reservoir surface, the recent investigations made by the Geological Survey, the United States Department of Interior. In cooperation with the state engineer of Utah indicate that the city could draw more heavily on this artesian reservoir. And I thought this was interesting on this last line. It says, and thereby utilize water that will other otherwise run to waste. I think we feel a little differently today about that water, where it goes and how it would go into the Great Salt Lake, but. It this has been super important to Ogden for a long time. So what what does this project consist of? We have broken this down really into three phases. We refer to these phases as the Pineview Water Line. The Ogden Canyon 36 inch water line, and that's kind of the title of what we call it. It's the majority of the project is that line. And then we have a section that is 42 inches that goes from what we call an overflow vault. At the as you come up the mouth of the canyon, you go straight up the mountainside to the south and we have a vault there and. The two water lines converged this vault and then there's one water line that feeds to our 23rd Street reservoirs. Yeah, I you've been up there. No, a while ago, we've been up there. Yeah. Here's just an aerial view. Our the top right, you'll see that is our well field. Our well filled, we we got pushed to that point in the late 60s and that was when Pineview Reservoir was actually raised up again. To a higher water elevation. We had we had our artesian wells. We initially got moved to a different spot. Where we had a lot of infrastructure and then when they raise the elevation of the reservoir again, we got moved all the way over to the point, which is just north of the middle inlet. From our well filled right there, the water actually goes in a pipe underneath the reservoir. And that was that that section of pipeline, just to be clear, was installed in about 1970. And then that pipeline goes along SR, I think, the 158 along the side of the dam and then it goes down to. Past our water treatment plant. And this is what we are calling the first phase of this project and not that it's in any order of how we will build it, but just how we've broken it out. The the second portion is is we call it the Ogden Canyon 36 inch line. This basically goes from our water treatment plant. All the way down to the bottom of the canyon and it will turn and head up the side of the the canyon. To tie into that overflow vault and there'll also be a portion that will extend out of of the canyon as well. Yes, I believe most of this project will consist of being able to we will have to move and replace in in the same alignment, which creates challenges and making sure that we keep everybody in water. The last section is from the overflow overflow vault to the 23rd Street reservoirs. So that'll head south. Along the the bench. Any questions to this point? Awesome. Project cost and and funding, as you can see in this picture, this was an original picture of when they went up the side of the the hillside with that 36 inch line. We anticipate the total cost of being $100 million. And, okay, and. The we anticipate that that cost and then the engineering and construction management contingency of being roughly 13 to 14 million dollars. Of that cost. So you can see the this next slide. Here we go, is the engineer's estimate of construction. So we estimate the the Pineview water from our well filled across the reservoir. All the way down to our treatment plant, but being approximately $22 million. The Ogden Canyon itself being 57 million and then from the overflow vault. To the 23rd Street reservoir is approximately $7 million. And moving forward, different than in in years past, as you could see from some of the pictures, we just. Want to make sure environmentally that we're keeping our stewardship. We will. We have already done a draft environmental report. Which is in process. We will continue to get final information coming in on the cultural resources. We also have, we cross with this line three times, the Ogden River in the canyon. So we'll need to look at the floodplain, evaluate that, make sure we have proper structures in place. Those crossings. We also want to minimize impacts on Pineview Reservoir and one thing. City leadership did a long time ago was when we got moved basically from the area in this picture to our current well field. We kept in there a caveat that if we ever needed to do work or a project, we would have the right to drain Pineview Reservoir. In fact, we used to act Ogden City used to actually have the Pineview Reservoir drained every year, looking back historically. And so we would have to go in and maintain our infrastructure. So that is one caveat that we have kept in being able to do this work and we have those records. The other thing is making sure we'll go through and do a historical review of where we're going through. The canyon and everywhere else where we could have possible impacts. A picture of when they were put in the 36 inch pipeline, just these these investments, they will. They will cause a rate adjustment to be able to do this, but the great adjustments, really, we're looking at the financial sustainability of our water supply. This water connection is crucial to the prosperity of Ogden, of being able to keep water supply for all of our use. And so we want to make sure that we are following all the proper protocols and in in the best management practices. Some of the 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 factors are, and this is actually a picture of that 36 inch line when we replaced the 24, we had to cross it. What you're seeing on there is the the coating of of that steel line, but we have done a couple tests since I've been with the city. One test within 2008 was done by Black and Beach and when they went and did some sounding of the line with some sonar equipment. They they commented on this 36 inch line at that time, there there were obvious leaks in it. However. They said the bigger leaks that we're seeing right now is in the 24 inch line. And so that's why we we established and and took on the project to doing the 24. Since then, we've also done another test from Pure Technologies and what we did with that is it is like a sonar testing. It's like a rubber ball. And we actually opened up the line, threw this rubber ball in that that was sanitized and and we were able to to do that and it bounces through the pipeline. And then down near the bottom, we actually collected it at the overflow vault. And so then we go, they took that back and analyzed. The data from that rubber ball. And again, it uses sonar to determine leaks. Within the pipeline and that came back that we obviously had leaks in this pipeline. And so we we know that there's some problems and, you know, I we feel that it's it's the right thing to look to be able to move forward to replace this before. There becomes an emergency and we're dealing it on not our timeline, on the emergencies timeline. So again, looking forward to the future, just like the the individuals in the past look forward to making sure we have reliable water supply. We want to make sure that we have this line replaced so that we can continue that reliability. That also that we can continue our water quality. We take great pride in delivering a product to the citizens of Ogden. And the other thing we want to do is this gives us an opportunity of really of of some water conservation because we do know. We are experiencing losses in this pipeline, quantifying that. I I can't tell you. I know for sure how much losses we have. However, on that 24 inch line, we were losing millions of gallons a day. And looking back from historically what we were producing and what we were selling and and our water losses and then seeing after that pipe was replaced. I feel confident during our peak season, we were losing over 3 million gallons a day. How much is coming out of this? I would I would dare say we're easily losing a million gallons a day or losing three. I don't think so, but somewhere between that that number, we could easily be saving. The again, this this is a great picture. This is of the train that went up the the canyon. And our alignment of our 36 inch line, we received all the rights from this rel alignment and this is where we put our 36 inch canyon water line. Our project schedule is we, you know, we're looking to to do the funding, get that all secured for July. We are in a gone through a contractor selection of a CMGC contract. We recently had selected Whittaker Construction. And we will look to anticipate some sort of construction in in the fall and that probably will include some clearing and grading and analyzing of the different structures and. Some of the things throughout the canyon, talking to briefly with Whittaker Construction. This project could take anywhere from three to five years to to complete. We will look to try to accelerate the schedule as much as we can and also go through. A process to see if we can reduce cost in in any manner from what we have anticipated they will be, but that's the. That's the schedule we know at this time. And with that, I will see if there are any questions.
So Justin, can you, when you talk about draining Pineview, can you clarify what that means? Does that mean taking it all the way down to nothing or does it mean dropping it down just to the level where the pipe is?
That'll be dropping it down to a level where we can cross the reservoir. But that will probably be somewhere to about 10% of capacity.
Okay, so pretty pretty low.
For a follow up, like, how long would it be at that level?
You know, I I don't know for sure, but we would anticipate that we could get across there if it's drained very rapidly. So I would suspect this would be something we would all the reservoir down through summer usage. And be able to then go in, finish draining it down, go through, dig across the the reservoir. Maybe pull or roll the pipe in. We we would like to get it buried so it's not on the bottom and we'd have to protect it with a bunch of rocks. There's a lot of boaters in there that would probably appreciate not having their props ruined that way and but the the current. Line is buried and that's what they did in 1970. They did that same thing. And we want to do it in such a way that we don't have to be back there. For a long, long time.
Hey, let's so sorry, we're for those listening online, we're sharing microphones and so we've got to. Yeah.
So has there been an improvement in the materials that will be used to construct this pipe so that it lasts longer than the one that's currently 100 years being used?
Yeah, and and I will say this, I've, I mean, the a steel pipe lasting 100 years, it's that's done very well. Different than what we've done in the past and going under the reservoir, we would actually look to use a different material. One of the things we'll also look at, I don't know how feasible it is right now is the is there portions that actually can be lined and use a structural liner? And that wouldn't reduce capacity enough that we hydraulically, we could meet our needs. So we will be evaluating that and looking at that. But probably across Pineview Reservoir, we'd be using an HDPE product, which is more of a plastic, usable plastic. And so and then that would also need to be contained inside another pipe as well.
And that that's the section that I had in mind when I asked, because that was dropped in in the 60s, right?
Late 60s.
Not in the not 100 years ago.
Correct.
Okay.
So. But there there may be, just like when the original pipeline was put in, there's sections of this pipeline that are actually old concrete pipe. There are sections that are still and we would actually look to utilize all the tools and resources available and make selections on what would be. The most economical and the longest lasting for each section of pipe.
So from a timing standpoint. You're you're talking fall after after the summer?
Yeah, well, we would probably start doing some preliminary work this fall. Not necessarily installing the pipeline, but there's going to be a lot of work and. Clearing the area, making sure there might be some aspects of the pipeline. Let's say like east of or excuse me, west of the Pineview Reservoir, that could be a section that could we could actually get in and and. Get to quicker. It wouldn't impact traffic.
I'm I'm more about the dropping the Pineview down.
So that that we are not looking to do this fall. So that would be probably the very end of the project and we'd probably look to schedule that in a way that could be the most beneficial to all the water users.
Which is when?
Probably in three to five years.
Timing wise from us. In the fall or is that?
Oh. Yeah, yeah. So we would and it would of course need to work with the contractor, but I would anticipate that would done somewhere between November and December. So we can and get the work done and then have spring runoff. Because again, it's it's that section is 2,300 feet. We've got to get across and we would hope that we could. Dig it, roll the pipe in and somewhat vary it. We don't. We just want to be below the reservoir. We don't have to be, you know, five feet below reservoir. So. That would be something we would look at. Of course, we will work with the contractor. Other options that we could float the pipeline and sink it, but then we would have to cover it with riprap and and there's pros and cons to all the different. Types of ways of doing this. But I want to do what's going to be the most beneficial to Ogden City in the long term.
Councilmember higher or Myers?
Now, my question would be, is the water that comes out of those artesian wells, is it, does it go through the treatment plant before it goes down the canyon?
Yeah, that's a great question. So those artesian wells were actually capped when they built Pineview Reservoir and they moved them to it. They actually drilled some wells and then. In 1970, roughly, they moved them to where they are right now, which is just on the north side of the middle inlet. And so. That water that comes up from those is awesome. It is pristine water. We send that down past the treatment plant. And the only thing we do is just inject chlorine into that, just to make sure that as as we, you know, have water go through our system. It's just insurance to make sure our water quality and the disinfection is is remained well. So. That gets shipped down and then our water treatment plant, we actually pull water from Pineview Reservoir. We treat that water. Through the treatment plant and then again, inject it with chlorine and send it on down the line through these two pipes.
Our well filled water is pumped, however, it doesn't come out of the water with any pressure. It it's pumped.
I've seen the old pictures before Pineview was there, the artesian wells, and they're certainly not where the location is at that you've got now. They're in other, they're in other places.
Correct. And so the the that location really is just from what the best I can tell is just where the dam of Pineview Reservoir is, is probably just east of the dam. Is where the those old pictures were of that where that would come up. So. Yeah, we have six wells up at the that we now pump out of the ground that produce that water.
Councilmember higher.
So you you're pretty comfortable that we're going to get all the water we need in the winter time use out of that 24 inch pipe plus what we have down here in the valley.
Yes, we will make sure as part of this project, and that's one of the things in driving the costs is that we will make sure that we have delivery of water to everybody. Currently, in the winter time, we fill the 24 inch line and we do send water down that 36 inch. However, it's not completely filled like it is during July. And so we will have to make sure that we can get all the water we need. To our city and that might be utilizing some of our water production on on again, in in our valley. We have a couple. We have some wells here and then we also draw water from Weaver Basin.
Do we wholesale water to any other municipalities or other customers?
We do to Bonavista.
Bonavista, so we're gonna have to make sure we keep keep good on those contracts then.
Correct.
Okay.
And I mean, just to, I feel very comfortable that we can do that. And the reason why I can say that is when we did the 24 inch project. We figured out how to do that and and keep everybody in water. And so you you all the residents in the canyon that we service, we kept them, we had to get very creative to keep them in service. The nice thing about doing this project different than that project is that their services all come off the 24 inch line is how we keep them in water. So now it's. The 36 really is just a true transmission line of moving water. Is how we keep them in water, so now it's, the thirty-six really is just a true transmission line of moving water. So, and just to give you an idea, roughly, right now, I want to say. You are sending around nine million gallons a day to twelve million gallons a day down that pipelines in the canyon. So, but that changes come June, July, August, September. That jumps up significantly.
I was curious, and I, I think I know the answer already, but um, what other entities use water from Pineview?
Um, I know the Ogden River Waters Users Association does, I know Rocky Mountain Power. Um, does, and so, um, and Weaver Basin has, has contracts with, with others as well.
So, I mean, I don't know how this impacts their service if we take the, that's where all the way down.
So we would, we would um, work with them, and so what, some of the thoughts that we've had is again, doing it at the time when Councilmember White. We, I answered your question in November, December, typically, they are not utilizing that for irrigation. I mean, this is heavily used for irrigation, so the thought would be, can we send the water down, fill Willard Bay completely up? Um, and then, like this year, we have a hundred and forty thousand acre feet of water sitting up in the mountains right now in our snowpack. Pineview Reservoir itself is a hundred and ten thousand. So, um, it could completely then re- refill that. Um, and that's, that's what we would like to have happen. However, I don't know anybody else that can, can guess what, what our snowpack's going to be. I know there's people who, who try and, and get paid a lot of money to figure that out, but. Um, I don't, I, yeah, I, I wished I knew exactly, like this year would have been a great year to, to have done that. Or actually, a few years ago, when it was basically down to fifteen percent capacity in the reservoir, would have been great to hurry and do that. We weren't ready then, so we want to be ready now.
Well, it's kind of like, you don't want to wish for that, because, yeah.
Yeah. But what I want to make sure is that our citizens in our city has this reliable source. This, this source of water leads to prosperity for our city, and we need to make sure that it continues to function the way we need it to function and delivering water.
I know when we talked about the twenty-four inch line, and we did the twenty-four inch line, we talked about losing that, that, all that water.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember ever hearing, did it cause like, I mean, I just assume all that water leaking out had to cause some type of erosion or. Damage underneath where the pipe was at?
So, wha- the best that we could tell, because we, we wondered that ourselves, and so. The, the soil was so rocky and the back fill um, was so rocky, that it was just probably flowing. To the river, just underneath the river. Um, what I do know is that when we fixed that line and and fixed the, the, a section of this pipeline just below the dam. That the, the operator was reading the gauge, had to actually increase flows from Pineview Reservoir. Because we were losing so much of our treated water to the river, so that they could keep the minimum flows in the river during the winter time.
And then, I mean, we don't want to lose any water, but I know we're thinking we're losing a million now. So do you think at our peak in the middle of summer, we're actually using more than that, right? It could be up to?
Yeah.
Two, three million?
It, it could be. I, I don't know for sure, Councilmember Blair, but I, I know we are losing water in certain areas up there.
Okay.
What will we do with all the dead tiger broskies?
Well, we'll feel really bad, because we would like to go catch them, um, but yeah, they're uh.
I, I guess a bigger question is what will it do to the?
So we're not going to drain, we're not going to drain the, the reservoir all the way.
The ten percent.
Yeah, so it will be down, and so we'll work with other agencies on that. But we have, we have the rights, though, because we are the ones that were impacted the most from the building of that reservoir. Now, we all know that that reservoir being built is, is a wonderful thing.
Fish have rights too.
That's, that's, and I don't, and I like fish, and you know that, um, so.
So Justin, um, have we had, or have there been any discussions, I mean, yeah, it's not ideal to drain the reservoir down, but are there other projects that could be done? To coincide with this, is there a way to in- increase the capacity in the reservoir? I mean, that's not our function, but if we talk to the other, to, you know, Weaver Basin Water and the other organizations, is that an opportunity for them to do something like that?
Yeah, so one of the, the things who, who I've talked to is the Forest Service. And they like the, they feel like it's a great opportunity, they need to redo their, their bolt ramps. And they feel this would be a great opportunity for them to be able to do that. And so I know there's going to be other entities that probably don't like this idea. However, and and we will, we will try to figure out the best, the best product for our city. And right now, that, that is an option on the table. Is that the option we're going to do? I don't know. But we have, we will talk to every entity, we've talked to Weaver Basin, we've notified people um, and showed them the documents that give us this right.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think we're ready for just Fred. This is Fred Philpot, um, Lewis Robertson in Burningham to talk about the uh, financing. Uh, analysis that they've con- conducted on this project, so. Thank you, Justin, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, I think Laura is on the.
Is Laura on, is Laura with us? Laura, you want to say hello?
I, I am here, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent.
We'll all get us started and then uh, turn over to Laura for a couple of slides. Um, we're really talking about three elements today, the Water Fund Financial Sustainability Plan. And incorporating a lot of the uh, financial components that Justin just walked through relative to the funding of that major project. We also were tasked with looking at uh, some of the other uh, transfers and administrative charges within the. Uh, Water Fund as well as the other enterprise funds. We are not uh, looking at reviewing the other utilities at this time relative to the sustainability models. We're working through that, um, relative to sewer, storm, and refuse, but I do have some um, elements related to those. With regards to next steps. Uh, with regards to these models, our objectives have remained the same as we've gone through revisions in the past and this revision. We're looking at ensuring revenue sufficiency and ensuring that each enterprise fund is self-sufficient. Even though uh, as it relates to bonding and debt coverage, we do often look at a combined debt service coverage. Uh, utilizing uh, multiple revenue streams to secure that debt. When we uh, complete these models, we're ensuring sustainability and self-sufficiency. We have a cash reserve goal of uh, three hundred and sixty days of cash on hand, uh, that's our target relative to the carryover. Uh, looking at debt, we are ensuring that the models, uh, when debt is utilized, that it's strategic and based on the objectives of the city. And we make sure that we are achieving our debt coverage ratio of uh, two times coverage a- as our target on that side. As indicated, uh, the water model, we're looking at substantial capital investment for this large project and the debt. Uh, associated with that project. The next couple of slides, I'm going to turn over to Laura, this is the schedule and the uh, profit parameters. If she's still there.
I, I am here, um, I was just trying to pull it up so on my own computer so I can see it a little bit better, so I'll just tell you. Um, give me one second if you would. There's a jeopardy music in your head. Um, there we go, so, um, the, the two pieces of this financing. Are going to come from the EPA through a program they refer to as WIFI, the Water Investment Finance, something or other. And through the um, through the state, uh, the state's providing a low interest loan, uh, one percent. And uh, WIFI's rate is, uh, in, in terms of like, you know, could you do better to land a straight up tax exempt? Rate, yes, but the terms um, would not be as good in terms of um, how we have to amortize it, our flexibility to call. Uh, and many other things, so it makes much more sense for this large of a project to uh, go with WIFI. Uh, so they, each of those entities refer to them as loans, but under the State Bond Act. In order for debt to be legally authorized, you have to issue through the State Bond Act, and so there will be um, bond issues. And we still have to go through the process that, you know, you have been used to when you've issued publicly offered bonds in terms of. Adopting parameters resolutions, um, you know, there are bond documents that are, uh, that will be drafted that we all have to review. You have to hold a public hearing, and then we have to close on the bonds. The state loan rate has already been set at one percent. The WIFI alone, the rate gets tied to um, effectively to treasuries through the state and local government securities. They refer to them as slugs, and we will run a debt service schedule, and we're still morphing that a little bit. In terms of do we want to stretch it out a little bit longer, uh, do we want to wrap it around your existing debt? When we pin that down in finality, it will um, give us what's called a weighted average maturity on the debt. And it's, um, you know, so think of like when you were in college and your three-hour classes you had an A. And your five-hour classes you had a B, that B is going to put more weight on your overall grade point because it has more hours. That's sort of how a weighted average works, because you, you have less principal maturing in the early years and more in the, the later years. It comes up with the average maturity, whatever that weighted average maturity, it's like, you know, it'll be like eighteen point six years. Whatever that number is, um, we will look to that slug rate for that year, that treasury rate. And then they add one basis point, we will set that on the day we close. So you will still need to uh, pass a parameters resolution, um, adopt the uh, loan documents. But there, unlike your publicly offered bonds, there's no um, need to have a pricing committee. Uh, again, the state rate's set, the WIFI rate is a set formula. We won't know what it is until that day, but it's not like we can negotiate with them. So with all of that, uh, the intent is to um, have the council consider for adoption. The uh, parameters resolution, uh, on April twenty-third, the schedule still um, shows as pricing committee. But it would merely be if you want to be there on the day we say, oh, here is, you know, the final rate. Um, but it would give, um, you know, I mean, if, if the markets go nutso, let's say they, you know, that rate would be ten percent. You don't want to do it, you know, we aren't, we don't have to do anything until the day we close. Um, we will have to post a notice of bond to be issued, and there's a three-day contest period. Uh, that's required by state law when you issue debt. Uh, for these particular bonds, you will have to um, hold a public hearing on the bond issue that is separate. And um, you know, apart from hearings that you will need, um, as you, uh, you know, contemplate raising your rates. For the state loan, they have a, a specific requirement that we um, that the city has to mail out. In its, um, you know, with your, your water rate bill notices, that you have to let them know of the public hearing. So the uh, what we're currently contemplating is that you would hold that hearing on the twenty-eighth. And then, um, you know, it'll be after that, your, you know, work would be done in terms of meeting as a council to do anything. Um, we would finalize everything and close in um, early, early, early to mid-June. That's kind of the high, high level of, of the, the timeline. As I went over that, I probably gave you more information than you wanted to know relative to, to the bonds. Um, the parameters are currently set, um, uh, with the discount rate of three percent. We don't expect that any of these bonds will be priced with the discount, they'll be priced at par for both of the entities that are issuing. Um, that are, you know, purchasing your debt. The reason I have that in there is in case, and the reason I'm going through this is, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the potential. Uh, suggested change in the paramount of the bonds. The um, once you pass this parameters resolution and go through all the hearings and everything that you need to go through. Should you determine within the next year or year and a half, like once, you know, maybe designs. I don't know the design and whole schedule, but what, let's say design finally gets completed, and they go, oh, we've realized X, Y, Z. And this is going to cost an extra four million dollars. Um, if you don't have that four million dollars laying around, and you call me up and say, hey, can we issue a small bond for this? I'm going to say yes, but if we increase the paramount of this particular parameters resolution. We, um, and we do that within, you know, a year, year and a half timeframe, you would not have to do another, um, you know, go through the other parameters resolution. So it's because of that potential, if that were to be publicly offered, we would uh, need a, a discount available for the underwriters. So I've left that in there, the maximum term is forty years, because we are allowed to do that under state law and under uh, the federal WIFI program. Not saying this debt will ultimately be forty years, again, we're, um, you know, still, you know, looking at various. Um, options of how to uh, um, amortize the WIFI debt. So that it is, uh, you know, the best for the city now as well as for, you know, many years to come. Currently, we're just looking at a, a thirty, twenty-five to thirty-year, but we might want to go out to um. A thirty, uh, thirty-five year. Um, so now that gets me to the, the maximum par. Uh, I only have seventy-seven million, which is just a hundred thousand dollars over the two uh, pieces of the debt that you'll be issuing. And it's there that I would recommend, and again, this was my oversight, that it didn't get in initially because I was out of town. And didn't quite communicate with my staff correctly, so buck stops with me. I would like that to be um, made a little higher, I'd recommend, maybe you put an additional five million dollars in there just for headroom. I always like a little bit of flexibility. Um, since we don't know the final um, weighted average maturity on the WIFI alone, I'd probably recommend we. We uh, move that interest rate up a little bit higher, remember they, um, their rates are tied to taxable rates. But we have the benefit with WIFI, you don't have to start, you don't have to capitalize interest, and you don't have to start making payments. Until your project's done, and since the con- construction uh, timeframe here is so long. Under a publicly uh, issued bond, we'd have to, um, we could only capitalize interest, one, we'd have to borrow capitalized interest, two, we could only do that for three years. And here, we just have so much more flexibility with that, they'll allow us to amortize it basically, sort of however we want, so to speak. Another huge benefit we have, um, is we have asked them to make these bonds, both the state and the WIFI piece. They will be on parity with one another, but they will be subordinate on that combined basis. They will be subordinate to your outstanding um, publicly offered bonds. The benefit is, if, if you were to say to me in the public markets, let's subordinate some of that debt, so it gives us some more headroom in the, in the priority bonds. It's going to cost you a lot in terms of interest rate. Here, it costs us nothing other than asking and negotiating, which we have done. So with them being subordinate, um, what that means is for your priority bonds, we have a one point two five times coverage test. It's something that Fred watches very carefully as he goes through his analysis to make sure we always, um, you know, are meeting that or projected to meet that. With these being subordinate, we can show that we have the one and a quarter with all the priority bonds. And we only have to have a one fifteen, one point one five um, coverage on your state and WIFI financing. So that enables us to have some headroom if you need other publicly offered debt. Um, it gives us, you know, not a ton of working room, but we're looking for everything we can, right? When you're looking at kind of rate increases that you, you have, this will give us some headroom. That, you know, you won't have to raise the rates to keep up one and a quarter with both the state and WIFI debt and your publicly offered bonds. We now, um, you know, with these programs and and them subordinating, we'll have some more flexibility there. Um, and then you can see here the outstanding paramount of the, the bonds that you currently have outstanding for all the, the water projects that you've done. And with that, I will take questions if you have them, or we can reserve them for the end, whatever you'd like. I can't tell if I put everyone to sleep, I could.
Let's, let's reserve them to the end, and then, or, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, so based on the water model, and again, the proposed debt service as well as all of the other functions in our water model. So we look at demand uh, and and fluctuations in demand, both your connections and usage. We forecast other revenues, uh, we grow expenses based on inflationary assumptions. Look at non-operating revenue, and then layer in the debt service and the additional capital investment, so this is one very large project. But there are other capital improvement projects and costs included in our model. And we layer all that uh, together and then look at the uh, rates to determine what we need to do relative to. The two functions that we have baked in. The two functions that we have baked into the model, which is an inflationary increase and a general rate increase. Historically, you've you've continued to use the um, the policy and ordinance that allows for those inflationary increases. Based on uh a specific formula that I'll review. Um, in addition, we have uh a line item for for general rate increases. Uh, and that's um a lever that we push and pull to determine um if we need to generate more revenue to maintain sustainability. So based on all of those variables, what we've looked at is a needed rate increase of four percent. Assuming that we get somewhere around three percent in inflationary increases based on that formula. So a combined increase in this first year uh based on the calculation of our inflationary number at three point one eight percent. Plus a four percent slightly above seven percent. And then I continue that in the model through the five-year planning horizon. So an additional four percent increase to achieve our targets relative to cash reserve and uh debt coverage. It does provide a little bit of a a cushion here. When we look at uh cash reserves, so here is our target, that three hundred sixty days. It's, you can see it dips a little bit, stabilizes out here slightly above our targets. There's a little bit of a cushion. Uh, uh, above that three hundred sixty days. The benefit that I've seen with the way that Ogden has utilized this model is we actually review this annually or. Uh, every other year to evaluate the performance of the fund and make adjustments as needed. Um, and also calculate that inflationary adjustment and see how that influences the sustainability. So uh, we're not recommending necessarily that you you make this change or or look at these adjustments and then do nothing, that you would continue that approach of. Uh, annual up updating and reviewing the performance of this model as well as the the other enterprise fund models. But essentially that four percent plus the three percent inflationary increase achieves this cash reserve target. Uh, slightly above our benchmark. With regards to the combined debt coverage, again, this is looking at uh bringing in the sewer and storm revenues relative to the other debt service. Since we are pledging uh those revenues uh with other debt service. Uh, here we're looking at ensuring that we stay above that two times coverage. You can see it does drop and get a little close as we layer on that additional debt, but we are staying above that, assuming that we have those. Again, inflationary increases plus the rate increase, the total increase of about seven percent annually over the five-year planning horizon. Uh, here is the uh a reminder of that formula that we utilize for the inflation component. It's called the blended inflation adjustment or BIA. Uh, that's calculated on a yearly basis. Based on a a weighted calculation using your um uh C CIP. Um, and Western Region CPI, so we look at a con- construction cost index. Uh, as well as a uh CIP um index. Um, those two variables, which we tie to uh proportionality within the the models and how we weight those. Uh, are how we calculate the weighted inflationary numbers. So it uses an operational uh weighting as well as a capital weighting to to calculate that inflationary adjustment. We do that for water, sewer and storm. However, for refuse, we just use the Western Region. Uh, CPI, Consumer Price Index uh variable. Those numbers uh are shown here um uh with the three point three percent and two point nine percent. Uh, generating that three point one eight percent calculation that's being proposed. Uh, for the inflationary adjustment, going again, going back to this slide, that's the calculation of this number here. And what this again is saying is in addition to that inflationary increase, we need another four percent in additional revenue. To get us that seven point one and, seven point one eight percent plus these future adjustments as we look into uh those future years. To achieve these, these numbers. Uh, so as as we look at recommendations, it's maintaining that inflationary increase calculated three point one eight percent. And the three point three percent for refuse. We do have some outstanding items relative to the other um enterprise funds. Uh, up continuing to finalize the master plans relative to sewer and completing additional analysis for the storm uh enterprise funds. And as I indicated, continuing to update those models to ensure that as we move forward relative to assumptions related to capital investment. And the bonding that we, we track that and ensure that we stay above or at those targets that we've, we've identified. Uh, as it relates to the storm, uh, I did want to highlight the issue here that we're tackling um or or that the city needs to potentially look at. Uh, that has to do with the demand variable. So uh, in prior models, we've, we've discussed this, but haven't actually made any correction or change. Looking at the base demand unit or ESUs. Um, there may be some modifications on how ESUs are calculated within the city. And that would change potentially the revenue stream uh within that model. And so we're still, you know, keeping that in your mind relative to a potential adjustment. Or a a revision to that, that specific model, um, because it would have changes. As it relates to revenue generation within that enterprise fund. Alright, uh, that was the first part.
Yeah, let's, let's take a pause there before we move into the enterprise analysis and just see if there's some question related to this first.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Are there already inflationary factors or increases built into our current water use system? The way that you, the model is set up?
Yes, this uh, the blended inflation adjustment, it's uh a policy adopted by ordinance that you look at. Um, ad- adopting that with review on an annual basis. So that, that is already baked into this process. That other line that whi- which we classified as just rate adjustment is not uh automatically applied. But I do make assumptions relative to that. So the first year is calculated. I just assume a a three percent, but that will actually be calculated in the specific year. Uh, uh, as part of that budget process and rate adjustment.
And then the four percent rate increase, that's an annual rate increase?
Yes, yes, yeah. So this would be seven point one per, uh, point one eight percent the first year, then a seven percent. So it is compounding uh in this model.
A little bit of follow-up on that too. So does this um model consider the conservation efforts that were kind of undergoing as well? I know we talked about that before in pre- previous years, so just kind of thinking about that. When we're kind of trying to preach conservation, but then we're raising the rates at the same time. I'm just curious about how that works in the model.
Yeah, this is actually a a very, a a challenging uh element relative to all utilities that I've worked with. Including Bieber Basin and and large water providers, which is the double edged sword of rates and rates. Uh, which increase, which uh promotes conservation, therefore reducing revenue and now you have to raise rates again.
All those other reasons.
Yes, conversely, you have uh areas, if you, if you generate more consumption or usage of the system, that generates more revenues. Which influences sustainability's models. So they're related to each other and. You you layer in uh environmental factors like the timing with droughts and those types of things. But how we address that is is really keeping your uh uh consumption consistent. And we look at purely um revenue generation in this model. And every uh couple of years, every five years, we'll go through a more in-depth evaluation of actual util- uh usage in the system. And make adjustments based on that. So right now, the model assumes uh universal revenue increases and therefore universal. Um, uh, application of those rates to base rates and and usage rates. But yeah, yeah, additional conservation above what what has historically happened would potentially influence this model. And result in less revenue. Uh, again, that's, that's affected many entities across the state. And a- at that point, you have to open this back up and say, okay, what's happening to our revenue stream and do we need to do anything about that? Um, it's, it's just a problem that's difficult to actually bake into this, other than assuming conservation remains fairly constant. What we did assume though is uh what I'll point out is we do have a little bit more aggressive growth and number of connections that are. Uh, applied in this model, assuming that we have some, a little bit more robust growth within the city. Uh, relative to redevelopment and the the number of uh. How uh housing units and the commercial development that's happening. So that um, uh, we've included a little bit more growth in this model that we'll have to track uh as we move forward. If that goes away, for example, then um that cushion, we may get closer to that three hundred sixty days than what.
So many complicated.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I think I know the answer to this. I'm just curious. So we have the four percent, four percent, four percent, four percent. Is there, does it benefit at all to say, instead of doing four percent, four percent, do eight percent the first year and then not the next year? Does that make sense? Instead of doing, instead of doing four percent, five years in a row, do eight percent skip a year, eight percent skip a year? Does that?
So usually from a modeling perspective, upfront rate increases reduces the long-term rate. So I would anticipate that that may be the result of that type of policy. Because you're now compounding those, that revenue generation in the first year. Um, uh, which then generates revenue theoretically in advance of the expense, right? You're generating surplus upfront and uh the the further you pull that forward, the more, the more you benefit from that. So when I do scenarios like this with entities, i- if they want to pull the Band-Aid off right away. Uh, I can usually show that that, that results in a, in a reduced long-term rate. However, there's the challenge of pulling off the Band-Aid, right? So it becomes challenging to do that. The other downside, I guess, if we're looking at pros and cons. So pro is it, it can impact the long-term rate, but some of the cons are um. That that requires your existing rate payer to bear maybe a larger portion of that, that cost rather than delaying that. Future users, right? Down the road, they contribute to that through, through the rates as well. But those are some of the trade-offs.
Okay, yes, thanks.
Um, I wondered if, if uh. The base rate might be the better place to throw in the increase. I, it's, it's just. I don't work with numbers like you do, so I'm just asking it. Um, you know, that way everybody gets the same amount of the rate of of the increase. Uh, just wondered if maybe that was something we, we ought to uh revisit and. Yeah. You know, I mean, this, this conservation thing, I, I think we're all on board that that's a, that's something we want to continue to push. But in in all reality, we're, we've got to pay for the infrastructure and that's what, that's what the rate really pays for is, is the delivery.
Yeah.
Um, and so I I kind of wondered if maybe that one might not be something to look at when you're looking at this, at this rate increase thing.
Yeah, so like I said, we didn't um open up the models relative to the valuation of demand. Uh, meaning when I do these types of rate models, uh, and and we're building from scratch. We'll look at all of the the connections by meter size and the usage and evaluate your tiers and determine if there are structural changes that may be needed. This model assumes that the structural, uh, y- your rate as it relates to its structure will remain the same. We're not making adjustments to proportionality of base rate versus usage rates. Uh, the fundamental assumption of that approach is that that structure is acceptable right now relative to how much you're putting in your base rate versus your usage rate. But some entities do want to explore that, which would require opening all of that up and and a reevaluation. But determine how much of of this cost do we want to put on our base rate? Which is borne by customers regardless of use versus how much of this do we put on our usage? Which that opens up risk within this model. Cause again, your usage is, is dependent upon several factors that that have some risk associated with it. So um, some entities want to put it on the base rate more to to reduce the risk variable. Um, but that creates its own challenges as well.
That's why I I was looking at it. I was thinking, you know, if if the rate continues to go up. It's going to be disproportionately weighted out to those who don't have secondary versus those who do. And and we've got, and that's an issue in Ogden. You know, we got fifty-five percent of of our citizens that don't, don't have secondary and forty-five that do. Um. And so I I don't know what that really looks like if you, if you kind of weigh it together somehow.
Yeah, and I I believe there are currently adjustments already within your rate relative to those with and without secondary. Yes, yeah, so it does, again, because it's a uni- universal application of that percentage and that. Uh, that allocation or consideration of different customers within your system continues to, to be there. So we didn't, for example, we didn't affect one customer higher than another. There are all, you know, everybody, the ceiling for everybody has gone up by that. That's seven percent and it's preserved that, that structure that you have relative to those with and without secondary. But yes, further analysis would be required to determine if that, that uh structure is still sufficient relative to other variables. But we have not evaluated that.
Is there a time in the, that we're looking to do that in the future?
Um, I believe there's been discussions with staff and uh to open that up, the whole model up. And and look at those variables and reevaluate demand and um. But I I don't have a specific uh directive relative to that.
Let's have one more question and I know, I think I know the answer to this too, but just for, you know, sake of argument and for community members that may not know. What would be the argument for bonding for this entire giant amount all at once? Versus trying to parse it out over time to help alleviate some of those rate increases?
And maybe Larry, you could.
So the, the challenge with that is um not knowing what the markets are going to do in the future. Um, not knowing, I mean, we haven't discussed that with WIFIA. The process with WIFIA has taken. Few years, I don't know, maybe more. I mean, again, they have a lot of flexibility, but it is a federal program and they're not um. Um, super nimble, let's just say that. So if you wanted to say, okay, let's, you know, tap out of WIFIA, now let's um, you know, go do this in the public markets. Then we're going to be looking at, okay, now you've got increased, um, you know, cost of issuance with each of those. And we can only capitalize interest for three years. Uh, so. I mean, I haven't run that, uh, but my guess is you're going to be roughly at six of one, half dozen of the other. And the other thing we have is we're subject to market rates. We all, you know, in the industry thought it rates would go down by now. They went down a little bit and then they went up some. Um, where you could read several economists that think there might not be the rate increases that the rate decreases, excuse me, that many were expecting this year. So one of the benefits we have though with the WIFIA program, the state program is rela- I mean, the state program, super low interest. Quite inflexible relative to how we can amortize the debt. The federal program, interest not so low, super flexible how we can amortize the debt. So one of the things that we're looking at is again, trying to keep those rates down is we don't have to start the amortization immediately. We can push that principle out long and, you know, we can actually wrap it around your existing debt. Uh, we can wrap around your existing debt and trail the payments off for a longer time. So we're using the tools we have, I think the best we can to try to keep those rates down. And uh, um, so that's sort of the best, you know, answer I can give you. You know, the other um, you know, impacts to the rates are the other capital improvements that, you know, are contemplated. That need to be done. Uh, we could, you know, push some of those out. Maybe that helps. But I know we, we can't answer whether that's a good thing to do from an engineering system perspective. We take what's given to us and here's what we need and we build that in into the model.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and then council member, White or Vice Chair White.
Uh, thank you. Without turning this into a financial seminar. At the risk of turning it into one. So the, 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 the inflationary factor will carry through time regardless. This four percent add-on is going to run for how many years and then does that disappear or does that run the course of the bond?
Uh, right now it runs the course of the five-year planning horizon for the purpose of the model. But um, again, the Ogden's approach is to really open this up and review every year. And you're essentially adding subsequent years, but uh, you know. Going beyond five years is challenging to predict what will actually happen. And so we hesitate including that in the, in the pro forma. But um, I'm, I would anticipate that uh those tools will still have to be utilized. Whether you utilize it every year, the rate increase and that inflationary increase will need to be considered as you, as you move forward. I think the challenge we've experienced recently is uh, uh, inflation has been much higher than, than anticipated. And a lot of entities have anticipated. So I've had um several entities go through uh back-to-back. Rate adjustments to, to account for some of the um, uh unforeseen circumstances. But I wouldn't uh be. But I wouldn't uh, be ta- I, I guess I wouldn't take that rate adjustment off the table beyond the five years. It would have to be evaluated.
Yep, thank you for that. And then what is this, for me, what does this look like to those of us that are users? So today's bill, let's run this through time, right? And compound this addition, what's, what's the five-year from now bill look like relative to today's, to today's?
Yeah, I can, I can pull that info. I, I've got a.
I'd be curious to know what that looks like to those of, those we represent.
As you compound that.
Exactly.
Time, yes.
And then um, debt service coverage ratio, can you tell me what that is?
Yes, so uh, really uh, what that represents is the revenue available to pay your debt service. After you paid your operating expense. So if I had um, two dollars of revenue, one dollar of operating expense. I have a dollar left over. If my debt service were, was a dollar, I'd have one times coverage.
Gotcha.
It's a reflection of that to ensure uh, from a rating agency and your, your bondholders to, to really gauge how. Uh, the, the risk associated with paying that debt service payment on an annual basis. So we want that coverage there to, to have some security.
And in our packet, as I read it this week, I, you, you correct me if I'm wrong Fred, but I think that. The enterprise funds, other than water, are meeting that goal of two. But water's at one and a half currently.
Uh, with the, the coverage, I'll have to double check that Laura. Do you remember the, the water mod?
I, I, without checking it, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. We will research that and get back to you.
Thank, thank you.
Yep.
So Janine, are you okay if I just send that response to you? It'll probably be tomorrow, tomorrow morning and then you can forward it on.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So I, I guess my question and thanks, it's actually um, follow-up question. Can a city be overbonded? Is there a, uh, I mean, I know that we're, we're figuring out how to cover the debt ratio of this bond. But can a city be overbonded?
I mean, any city can certainly be overbonded. Just ask Detroit, uh, Puerto Rico. Uh, so if, if you can be overbonded, you are nowhere near what I would consider overbonded. Um, and when you're thinking about this, I would say um, and. Marcia and Angela, I, I can tell who you are, even though I'm seeing you in like miniscule and I'm, I know you by first name, so I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not.
I'm M, she's A.
Sorry for not addressing you. Yeah, there you go. Um, so it's a great question. It's something I'm glad you're aware of and, and tuned into. But for the moment, I'm going to ask you all to sort of put on, if I were a bond purchaser hat, okay? So if you were a bond purchaser and you, you owned any of your outstanding bonds or any of these new bonds. Certainly they want to know that you're not overbonded. They want to know that, you know, this is um, reasonable. And um, you know, your likelihood of paying those bonds is very high. So they are going to look at the things that Fred has talked about and for these bonds, I'm going to answer it related to the utility revenue bonds. I'm giving you an answer relative to overall debt. So um, your utility revenue bonds, as a bondholder, the only thing that you can come after the city for to collect. The only pledge that you are making to them is that you will maintain, you know, the system in good and working order. That you will charge rates and control expenses in such a fashion to deliver that coverage ratio. Should you not do that multiple years in a row, particularly if you were to default, they will come. Storming in, so they will certainly send the right people to uh, say, hey, you know, you, they would, they're. What they would do is require that you retain a third-party engineer. And they would look to say, you are going to have to reduce these expenses, you're going to have to raise your rates. Because that's the only thing that any of those bondholders have, including WIFIA, including the state. If you, you know, proceed with these, these state loans or these state and federal loans. So in those terms, that's why we take such a careful look at all the things that Fred has talked about. And it's not just like, we think four percent sounds good. It's we're looking at the things that the market cares about. Um, in terms of your um, day's cash on hand, of your debt service coverage. And related to the question about debt service coverage, from the bondholders' perspectives, they don't, they don't look at it. As sewer's got two times and, you know, storm sewer has two times and water has one times. They look at it at holistically. The pledge you have made is that on a holistic, you know, three-system utility revenue bond. That you're maintaining that coverage of one quarter. But that's why, you know, we break it down because we want them to be self-supporting. And we look at what you should have in terms of uh, days cash on hand. Uh, the market's, you know, platinum standard is to have uh, you know, three hundred and sixty days on hand. If it drops below that, it's not like, you know, fire alarm bells go off. If it drops down to one month, we would worry. But we take really good care to make sure that, you know, financially it is self-supporting. You're not going to have to, you know. Look to the future and raise rates fifty percent one year because we didn't, you know, for people really have to conserve to do that, right? So it's a long answer to no, this is not too much debt. It is a lot of debt. I understand that. But it's not just the amount of debt, it's can you afford to pay, repay that debt? And that's why we go through all the, you know, pain that we have to make sure that you can repay that debt. If you were to say to me, we want to do all this debt and we're not going to raise those rates. Now I'm going to say you've got too much debt because we don't want to put you into something that's going to default or has a high. No, a higher likelihood of default or not maintaining, being able to maintain your system like you need to. So that's the answer relative to water sewer, storm sewer. Now I'm going to jump over to Ogden City and RDA debt. Um, you know, each of those bonds have different security for them. And uh, one of the metrics that the rating agency does look to in regard to Ogden's um. Ogden's, you know, general rating, they call it, and they refer to it as an ICR, Issuer's Credit Rating. Um, they view that as what they think uh, the general financial health is of the market, uh, excuse me, of the city. Um, and uh, you know, at what it would be if you had general obligation bonds outstanding. And one of, one of, it's important to know, one of the metrics that they look at is your debt per capita. And your debt to um, uh, debt to revenue, right? Debt to taxable value ratio. Um, uh, you know, if, if I were to, I don't have, you know, nine hundred cities across the US to know what those metrics would look like. With, but I have a sense, with the, the issuance of the debt that you, um, the city just entered into um. Relative to Wonder Block, your debt per capita is going to be high compared to other cities, probably your size. Uh, your debt to taxable values, that ratio in an, in a vacuum is going to be high compared to cities of other size. The nice thing is they don't just look at that and go, oh, their factor is X and, you know, XYZ city in California is something different. And you know, you're not as good as them, so we're going to downgrade you. They really do look at it holistically. And they take those factors into account as well as, again, what are the financial plans to repay the debt? So if you had just gone out and issued, you know, the two sixty million dollar bonds, give or take, uh, for that project. Without having the financial plan of how we're going to pay for it, I would have said, don't, don't do this. It's not good. It will be too much debt. But they look at um, things like, uh, you know, debt that's supported by tax increment or sales tech. They look at, they look at those revenue streams that are pledged to that in, in making that determination. If you were to call me tomorrow and say, we want to issue a hundred million dollars for. A new golf course or a park or whatever, I, I'm probably going to say, you're, you're kind of, you know, at. You're not at the end, but we'd have to make sure, again, what are we going to pledge? How is that going to fit into your finance plan? So that would be a, a trickier one for me in cities, um, you know, general. Um, the city's general debt type of issues, not saying you're done. But we really have to think about, um, you know, those revenue sources that we're going to use to repay that debt. And that was probably about ten minutes longer than you wanted, but. There you go.
Yeah, and I just have one other comment, question, comment. Um, so the term of the bond is almost like half of the, the. The life of the pipe, is that something, is that normal?
The, what we, I, I may not be understanding person and I will answer it a lot shorter than the last one. You ideally want your debt service to mature prior to the end of the useful life of, of the asset that you're financing. Um, so your existing pipe, I think, what did they say, is ninety years old? Um, the longest we can issue bonds under state law would be forty years. But as a, you know, quick example, let's say you were going to do a road. Um, you can finance a road over, you know, again, forty years under Utah law. Would I ever advise that? Heck no, because you're going to have to basically dig that road up and resurface it in, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So in this case, I believe, you know, Justin maybe is the right person to answer the question, but I believe the asset is going to, you know. Way outlive the um, it's useful life, way outlive the, the life of the debt.
Awesome, thanks Laura. I think at this point, move on in the presentation to the utility transfer analysis.
Yeah, in the interest of time, what, what's your, how quickly or slowly do you want to do this? Okay, perfect. All right, so the administrative fee uh, is the second element that we looked at. And that was evaluating the five percent uh, allocation from the enterprise funds. Uh, as it relates to covering administrative costs like HR, accounting, legal, et cetera. And evaluating if that approximates the actual cost as less than or more than. So we just wanted to see uh, is that five percent approximating something that's reasonable? So how we did that is we uh, looked at determining the administrative overhead costs that we would include in the evaluation. So what functions would be classified as administrative overhead and therefore be allocated uh, in this study? Then uh, proportionally allocate those costs based on uh, some sort of metric. In this case, we looked at a proportion of budget by department, uh, and a percent of FTE. So what, what happens if we allocate it based on those two variables and what are the numbers? Uh, then we looked at allocating that cost to the different departments and comparing those, those different approaches. So here are the functions. Nope, okay. Uh, so we looked at um, the mayor, uh, budgetary line item, the council, administration, human resource. Uh, comptroller, fiscal operations, purchasing recorders and attorney. So th- those are the functions that we assumed really serve all departments in the city and provide that administrative overhead. Uh, that's about ten million dollars of expense and sixty-six FTEs allocated to those functions. So that approximately ten million dollars is what we're now looking to divide amongst. Uh, uh, the, the departments that, that benefit from those functions. Okay, so here are the, the departments then that we evaluated. Uh, that would again, benefit from that administrative function and the proportionality of FTE and budget. So community and economic development, fire, justice court, police, public services, refuse, sanitary sewer, storm sewer and water. Uh, so here we looked at um, their percent of the budget of the, of the total, um, of the total. And uh, from an FTE perspective and the percent of total from a budget perspective. So you can see there are differences here on FTEs versus, okay, I'm going to, I got sticky fingers here. Um, you can see the differences in FTEs as, as compared to, to budget. Um, a good example, uh, where, where your higher numbers are when you look at police, for example. Uh, there's a little more FTEs there, so you have a concentration of full-time equivalents. Uh, versus their percentage of budget. Um, other departments like water, for example, less FTEs. But a, but a much higher budget percentage. So uh, differences in those metrics, uh, and that results in a different allocation, uh, when we proportionally allocate that administrative overhead. And that's shown on this uh, slide here. So just looking at water, storm, sewer and refuse. If I allocate a percentage of the administrative overhead, that ten million dollars. Based on FTEs, water would be allocated almost one point one million dollars. If I were to look at as a percent of their budget and uh, proportional allocation from that perspective, it would be two point eight million dollars. Again, you can see the difference there, what their budget looks like versus the FTE allocation. I then compared that to the actual five percent transfer. And it looks at most cases that our. Uh, allocation of administr- administrative overhead is weighted towards an FTE allocation. The outlier there is, is sewer, where we see that weighted a little more towards the, the budget number. But still below the allocation that would fall uh, under that methodology. So uh, using FTEs, it would be for sewer would be two hundred and twenty-six, almost two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four uh, numbers. Uh, whereas it, the budget, the percent of budget is over one million dollars. Their actual uh, five percent allocation was seven hundred and twenty thousand. So as I looked at these numbers, uh, my initial reaction was they appear to be reasonable. Within the bandwidth of these two methodologies as a percent of uh, FTE versus uh, uh, budget numbers. With a weighting more towards the FTE allocation. Uh, typically, uh, entities will utilize that FTE allocation over the budget allocation. Uh, because of capital investment, for example, can skew those numbers, whereas your FTEs remain fairly constant. Uh, so again, my, my response to this comparison was the five percent allocation appears to be reasonable as, as budgeted. Uh, within the parameters of the, these two methodologies. Alrighty, uh, questions on the five percent before we shift over to the uh, utility transfer percentages?
Let's go ahead, please.
Okay, alrighty, so on this side, what we're looking at is um. Impacts to the general fund if a six percent uh, transfer. Uh, relative to a property tax equivalent and a six percent transfer for a franchise fee equivalent or a total of twelve percent. Wa- was discontinued, meaning the enterprise funds uh, stopped transferring that twelve percent allocation to the general fund. Uh, conversely, what would happen if, uh, to the, to the enterprise funds if that were to remain, if that re- revenue were to remain within the enterprise funds? Uh, so how we looked at that is we calculated the total transfer that's going from the enterprise funds to the general fund. We needed to look at the certified tax rates that we could determine a uh, uh, property tax equivalent rate. To generate that necessary revenue. Um, that's the third step. So what would we have to levy to mitigate that lost revenue with, within the general fund? Then I needed to look at the tax impact on an average home and determine uh, or, or guesstimate. Uh, evaluate that monthly impact, because we're talking about two different uh, funding mechanisms now. One is a property tax allocation and one is a uh, utility assessment based on usage. So trying to approximate some comparison between those two variables. Uh, alrighty, so here is the assumptions relative to that. Your certified tax rate value at eight billion, eight and a half billion dollars. I, I also have highlighted a variable here relative to your exempt part, uh, property valuations. And that's an element that we're going to talk about, um, how that might influence this. Yes, yep, all exempt properties that are exempt from paying that property tax. Uh, therefore they have a zero percent taxable value or, or zero dollar value. Uh, looking at the totals here, there's about six point three million dollars being transferred out of your utility funds into the general fund. Yes, that is the twelve percent from those uh, enterprise funds. To recoup that, you would have to generate a levy of triple zero seven four seven to generate that six, uh, six point three million dollars. What that looks like is uh, a tax impact of about two hundred and five dollars on a five hundred thousand dollar home. An annual tax impact. So uh, that would be a, a pretty decent increase. Um, I think it's a little over thirty percent of your. Uh, tax revenue within the general fund, so it's a, a decent amount of, of revenue within the general fund. Resulting in a, a fairly hefty increase on a five hundred thousand dollar home. Uh, I then compared that to an average utility bill. Uh, this is all of the utilities, it's about a hundred and seven dollars. That twelve percent off the hundred and seven dollars is about twelve dollars, almost thirteen dollars that is allocated out of a monthly bill towards this this twelve percent allocation. If I take that two oh five, divide it by twelve months out of the year, an average property would be paying seventeen dollars in a new property tax assessment or a four dollar increase above what is currently being paid out of the enterprise fund allocation methodology. So ultimately, what would happen is what this is suggesting is that shifting from a transfer out of the utility funds or that twelve percent to a property tax assessment would likely result in an increase to the monthly impact on a typical residential residential unit. Why that's happening is likely, again, going back to those tax-exempt properties or one one variable is are those tax-exempt properties. Those properties will no longer be paying a property tax, which reduces your base and it takes some of that value out of your base. And now that cost has to be borne by the smaller base, which which excludes those exempt properties. So there will be a shift, right? And and who pays for that that lost revenue? Now, I'm assuming that you would make that revenue up and not just let it, let the general fund experience a six million dollar loss, but obviously, this this is showing that there's substantial impact as a result of shift in methodology away from that transfer to a property tax assessment. So that was the first first side of that evaluation is what is the impact to the general fund? The second part is a little bit more difficult to evaluate because we don't have complete models yet for the other enterprise funds. Actually, sorry, go to pros and cons first. Sorry. Pros and cons of why we we discussed this, the the one issue is that it's if you shift to away from that utility transfer, then there's a smaller base. So keeping it as a utility transfer broadens that base, it ties to demand. So that fee is tied to those assessed based on usage of the system. That water, storm water usage, sewer usage, refuse is really tied to at least half of that, that six percent enterprise or sorry, franchise allocation. That's really the demand variable associated with that allocation. If you shift to a property tax assessment, it's tied to valuation, which really doesn't have to, you know, isn't related to 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 the base assumption of that that specific fee. In addition, there's more control on the enterprise funds. So this discussion we're having today of the ability to manipulate rates and control those. There's a little bit more flexibility there on the enterprise funds. So those are the reasons why it is beneficial to stay in that under the utility transfer. Why not? There's a perceived less loss of transparency through that approach. So property tax, any changes to property tax, you're required to go through truth and taxation and the associated public hearings. So there's that perception or or lost transparency that can that can be as a result of keeping it in the enterprise funds. Alrighty, so the second part is analyzing the impact on the water, sewer and storm rates as well as refuse. That's less applicable because they don't have the same impacts that that we do in these other funds here. But again, the challenge here is we're not finished with those other models. Evaluating the true impact there is challenging. However, when I looked at turning that twelve percent off, so our model is is very flexible and turning things on and off, so I can just change assumptions and see what happens. You know, this this would be a boon, obviously, to the to these enterprise funds to no longer transfer that money out. So that four percent that we were showing may not be necessary, right? Those inflationary numbers may be sufficient to maintain sustainability if we now reduce that that transfer amount and eliminate that. So when I did that on the water side, I didn't need to plug in that four percent rate increase. Again, in future years, it still may be may be needed, but it did impact that that model. I would envision that it would, again, similarly help the other enterprise funds as it relates to their sustainability, if there's an infusion of new revenue or or the elimination of this transfer within those within those funds. So a ban on one side, a boon on the other is really what it comes down to. So that gets us through the three buckets that I was supposed to talk about, quite a bit to go through. Any questions on the admin charge or the utility transfer?
I don't have questions. I think that really helps me think about it. I mean, I think I was thinking about it similarly, but I just, I'm really, it's really helpful to see the actual numbers. Be able to talk to people about it.
Yes.
And we have asked Fred to put together a written report that reflects this information so that we can make it available to the residents.
Yeah, I was just gonna pat you all on the back. I get a notice in my utility bill every year from Bountiful Power regarding their transfer. And there's really none of this analysis associated with it. It's purely, it's basically to say it's it's a benefits, the general fund, and it keeps your property taxes lower. So we transfer all this money out of the power fund into the general fund. But having this data is very beneficial to see what is the impact if that goes away and how property taxes are affected and having that data to support that administrative charge was enlightening for me to go through that exercise as well.
Councilmember.
Most of the question that I that I have with respects to how we came up with these percentages. You know, we get that, we get asked that all the time. How did you come up with that number?
Yeah.
And and, you know, I I know that it it supersedes me a long time. You know, it's been, we've been in this for a long time. And I think once people understand this this way, if they if it ever sinks in and they realize that, you know, it's it's just, they're gonna pay this one way or the other.
Yes.
It's gonna be property tax or it's gonna be in rate. And it's probably gonna be less if it's in the rate than if it's in the property tax.
Yes.
That that's that's the sum of it.
Exactly.
They're gonna say, well, hey, jack that number way up. You know, so I guess that's my question is, is how do we justify those percentages? And and at what point does it does it get to where you can't?
Yeah, so that's that's the the basis of that administrative allocation analysis. Say, hey, are we in the bandwidth of that? And and maybe there's room for flexibility there to say, do we push that up and try to capture more based on one methodology or another? I didn't I didn't look at determining which direction you'd like to go with that, but you're right that that this gives information to help justify the allocations as they are, but future discussions may be warranted relative to, do we maximize that? Recognizing that the enterprise funds, again, broadens that base allows you to affect those that use the system to pay for the system in a different way than the property tax. And that's a key takeaway from this this discussion.
I think it's important also to to delineate that we're talking about the five percent, which is different than the twelve percent, right? In my mind, early on, I kind of combined those two. But the five percent is for those administrative functions, and that's not something that's necessarily noticed, right? That's that's just something that we're able to do. But the twelve percent, and maybe that's your count, your question, councilmember hires. How do we come up with a twelve percent? And and on your objectives, you talked about the general fund, the six percent as a property tax equivalent. Is that?
Yes.
So maybe talk to that real quick.
Percent is I I I guess I'm in the same boat that you are in some respect relative to the history behind the percentages. So I didn't open up to say whether that was justified or not. The the six percent franchise is is more definable relative to what entities typically assess on utilities relative to a franchise allocation, which is designed to cover that disruption and infrastructure from projects, capital projects and other services to to capture that. But I didn't really open up the other history relative to the other six percent allocation. Just again, my objective was to evaluate the impacts of that.
And that, from a transparency standpoint, that twelve percent is noticed, and we do have a public hearing on that.
Yeah.
And which is what prompted a lot of this discussion anyway, so. Any other questions or discussion on this item? It's a lot, a lot of information today, but I I definitely would appreciate a write-up that, you know, I love the slides and everything, and that's great, but yeah, something a little bit.
Yes, and the write-up will have more details on the on the data and calculations, so we'll be able to see all of that. And then the the conclusions of this, these three studies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. All right, next up, we'll bring Brandon Rippey in, our senior planner, to talk about the creation of the Flex Industrial Zone. This has been before, before. I think we now have a a final, more of a final product to talk about.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm just gonna go through this fairly quickly. As you know, originally, we reviewed, the original application was for the modifying the airport commercial zone. And right now, we are reviewing the Flex Industrial Zone that is a new zone that we're presenting to you that we've gone through a couple of times. There were a couple of questions that the council had and that the the council staff had regarding the how the new zone would impact the airport, how it would impact the rest of the city. So I guess the primary questions, original questions, when the air or the airport commercial zone was proposed was how is it gonna affect the other areas that are also zoned AC? And then would we be adding other non-aeronautical uses around the airport? So with the new zone, we feel like we've addressed both of those concerns. The new Flex Industrial Zone would have to be applied to a specific property. So there is currently no property that is zoned for the industrial zone. So it would be up to you to make that decision. There is, or the applicant does have the desire to place the airport commercial zone on property that is adjacent to the airport, and you've seen this map before. This just shows its location as or adjacent to the airport. And specifically, this highlights the the property. It's roughly ten acres. So the Flex Industrial Zone can be applied to other areas of the city. And we feel like the new zone is a zone that we we could apply other areas with the this area potentially becoming zoned for Flex Industrial. Wanted to make sure that there were some limitations in order to protect the airport and its function and not create competition with the airport. So there are some limitations that we've placed. And we've also removed several uses that could potentially be considered a conflict. So I want to go over those really quick. So in the land use table or the Flex Industrial Zone, some of the uses that we have removed or modified include outdoor entertainment or recreational business. So that would include things that could cause dust or or other issues to the airport. So those have been removed. Churches and houses of worship have also been removed. And trade or vocational schools. So those, that one has been modified to reduce group size of thirty or less, and that meets the requirement in the overlay, airport overlay zone. We've also removed single-family dwelling units for night watchmen as well as businesses that are a business located on a lot without a main building. So all of those uses have been removed as options within the proximity of the airport. Also, public uses that include dwelling units or areas of assembly of more than thirty have also been removed from as an option near the airport. We also reduced the outdoor storage area from twenty-five percent to fifteen percent, so significantly reduced that. There is a circumstance where outdoor storage could be allowed as a conditional use up to twenty-five percent, and that is only for storage of finished products. As I said, we removed a lot of the, all of the on flicks. So we removed outdoor aviation fuel storage. Also, the retail sale of aviation fuels. Outdoor entertainment, as I stated before, like go-karts, outdoor sports. And then we've also put a note in the ordinance that notifies anyone that if they are within proximity to the airport, that there is a potential for the building heights to be reduced. We we added a requirement, this to create more articulation, building articulation if there are buildings that are longer than fifty feet, just to add more character to the buildings. That doesn't really affect the airport per se. We also included some text that we should have had in the in the zone that talks about buffer with within prox or within ten feet of the airport's perimeter fence. So we included that in the text update. So we feel comfortable with all of the changes that we've made and feel confident that this would be a compatible compatible use next to the airport. Any questions or comments?
Councilmember higher, everyone looks at.
Well, I I really do appreciate that. You you guys kind of held my hand a little bit as we walked through some of these uses, and I very much appreciate that. I I still remain, I still have a concern. I don't know that it's valid. And and maybe our acting CED director may may be able to weigh in on this, but it it is, it is hugely in Ogden's interest to keep the FAA happy with us. And where this does have such a close proximity and is technically inside the the road boundary of the airport, is this, would the, would we anticipate the FAA is okay with this kind of a zone change that close to the airport?
We did, we did meet with airport manager and discussed this topic specifically. So he didn't have any issues besides those uses that we discussed, the schools, the uses that would create a large gathering and the public use, like a library or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's correct. And you've pretty much answered a bunch of it. So the things that the FAA is gonna look like is it's a large gathering space where a lot of people could congregate in one area in that close proximity to the end of a runway. So different things like that. All of the building heights are going to be regulated and controlled regardless, whether we actually have an ordinance or not. The FAA requires when you're in certain proximities and distances to the runways and the RPZs and the different protection zones and stuff that we have out there, you have to fill out, it's called a seventy-four sixty, it's an airspace form. You send that to the FAA, it has to be very detailed with the heights of the building, the elevations, the different aspects that go with it, and they review that and they approve that to make sure that's outside that zone. And it's not something that has to get recorded or put in as an intrusion into any of that airspace. And then they've done a good job at looking at other uses too. They're gonna look at a use, is it something that's going to create like smoke, you know, or something like that, that could have, create a visibility issue or any issues within of the instrumentation that's out at the airport and things like that. And so I I am not concerned with the uses and stuff that they've kind of landed on and where they've gotten. I think they've done a really good job at trying to go through and parse those out and make sure that they do comply with the requirements that we have. And as far as rezoning it, I mean, the FAA can always say they don't necessarily, maybe they don't like it, but the reality is as if they don't own it, they can't really stop it. They can only control the the uses per se that are on it.
Perfect.
Any other questions or discussion? This is set to come to us on the twenty-third for action. So anyone object to that at this point, now that we've seen the adjustments? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good job. All right, I didn't know if we would have time, but I think we do have time to move into presentation. Policy analyst Steve Burton to talk about Policy analyst Steve Burton to talk about, uh, deed restrictions and housing affordability. Welcome. Steve.
Hi there. Yeah, so, um, the, uh, this, this conversation and this me presenting this stems from a question that was brought up a few, a few months ago about, um, a rezone to the R two S zone. Some of you might remember that. That was a question about can a development agreement accompany a rezone to require deed restrictions for owner occupants? And it's a really good question. And, uh, what we told you we would do is we'd put our heads together as council staff with planning staff as well as legal team to come up with an answer for and summarize, um, that answer. So, uh, we met in early March. And, um, I appreciate planning and legal and Glenn and Janine and everyone's expertise on this subject because, um, I think we've got a, a good answer for you and happy to, to, to talk a little bit more about that as well if you have additional questions. So to, to that question, can a development agreement accompany a rezone to require deed restrictions for owner occupancy? Again, R two S zone, it requires that properties that that lots be platted, but it doesn't necessarily require that the, the, that it's occupied, right? It doesn't require that the units are owner occupied. Um, technically, the, the, the answer to that question is yes, it can be done through a conditional overlay zone, but it, it's really not recommended for a few reasons. One reason is that it's really difficult to enforce. So you'd have to have some entity or some person, um, enforcing that whenever somebody buys one of these units or whenever somebody sells one, that the owner actually lives there. It's tough to enforce. Um, and, and a- as, as a group, we couldn't figure out who exactly has the manpower to do that and has the, the ability to do that financially either. Um, s- it, it would probably be recommended to leave that up to a, the developer or an HOA to enforce if the city really wanted to do something like that. Um, another reason that it's not recommended is, um, just from a, a planning perspective, from a land use perspective, um, you don't, you don't, you really don't wanna prohibit renters or, or, or be appearing to prohibit renters. Um, my background as a planner would tell me that a, a neighborhood is more likely to thrive if you've got diversity, including diversity among income levels, right? And not everybody can afford to, to own. Um, another, I think the third final reason that it's not recommended is, um, it's not always legal to mandate owner occupancy with private developments through development agreements. Um, there are, there are some protections to renters that we've seen through some case law. Um, there, there have been some, there's been some case law, um, results that have said that municipalities should regulate use, not necessarily how a property is owned. Um, and it's also, you also have to be careful in, in requesting a, a developer to deed restrict. Um, because in the case of, of the R two S zone, the R two S zone doesn't require that. Um, and to, to deed restrict or to force a deed restriction on a developer asking for R two S, um, isn't legal because, because the R two S zone currently doesn't require that. Um, now, what, what we did talk about is this group, as we said, that you, the council could look at amending certain zones um, to incentivize developers to do deed restrictions. Um, that could look something like bonus density, extra units on top of what they would normally get in the R two S zone. I did look at cities all around. So, uh, Logan, Salt Lake, Park City, Lieber County, um, a bunch of cities in Davis County, and no, no one's deed restricting for owner occupancy unless it's for accessory dwelling units or for moderate income. And I'm, I'm assuming they're not doing that for the reasons that we talked about. Um, we also briefly talked about with city-owned property, like an RDA project, for example, the city could look doing some owner occupancy deed restrictions, but it would fall back to who, who would enforce that? Um, planning in our meeting, planning gave a really good, um, gave a chart that showed, um, owner, let's see, it showed platted townhome units, tap-platted townhome projects. It showed the ownership um, and how those are owned. It showed if they're owned by individuals or corporations. And it also showed how many, uh, of those units are owned by separate people. And I, I'd be happy to show that on the screen. I, I invited Barton here, who could probably explain that a little bit better, the, the chart.
Yeah, we were just curious, uh, if the townhome units that have been platted, whether they were all being bought up by companies to rent or all remaining in the individual ownerships.
Rotate view if you go back to that one that you were at before, right there, the first one.
So these are the projects. Okay. Okay, so these are the projects we looked at. Each of these are townhome projects that have been platted for individual ownership. And we just looked at the ownership names, if they were individuals. You know, that still could have been an individual that is renting them out to their peasant or something like that. But, uh, we found that ninety-one percent of, on average, are in separate ownerships. So, and of those, um, there were eleven that were in corporate sounding names for them. So the vast majority of them are in fact in individual ownerships. There was one project that's fairly new. That's the, uh, yeah, the Fenway Fields. That's still under single ownership. They haven't sold out the units. So that's just what's out there in the field right now. So about ninety percent are actually, look like they're owners, individual owners.
Well, and I think, I mean, I can speak from experience, um, that I know that each of, some of them are HOAs. I don't know if they all are, but some of them are HOAs and they have certain rules around how money can be rentals. Whether that can be enforced or not is probably still a challenge, but I think that, you know, it doesn't really indicate, I guess, that people aren't renting them, this analysis. At least not owned by corporations.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions around this topic? And if you have any later, feel free to reach out, but we just wanted to present what we talked about in that meeting, so.
Thanks, Steve. All right, I think we're adjourned till our six. Oh, nope, sorry. We're not adjourned.
Couple of things to let you know, a flash vote survey on the, um, vacation rentals went, went out today, and so we'll get it back on Thursday. Um, some of you still, if you could, take time to review those, those slides from HR and just send me a, there's like, there's not very many. There's like thirteen or fifteen slides. Um, and then just email me. And then just, there's no meetings next week, just a reminder for that.
All right. We are adjourned till six, about three minutes.